All right, I'm in Todd, much better.
Can I take me a moment to get the, get the Facebook going? And then we'll be ready. There we go.
I only see two board members, am I missing somebody?
Yeah, I don't know where everybody is.
Did my message?
Todd, you're muted.
Kristen will not be able to attend today.
I did get that, I did, she's texted me as well, but I don't see any of the others either. I only see Gary. And he's, did I miss the green shirt memo?
It's green shirt day. Come on. As Irishman, you know.
Okay.
There's Aaron.
I did miss the green day. Put a green shirt on right now. That's hilarious.
Here, I'll, let's see if I can, we should like do a virtual high five to everybody with the green shirt. So we are recording, we are live on Facebook now. And I think when we, when you see you have quorum, I can jump to that intro screen, Chris.
Okay, I don't see a quorum yet, we need one more.
Evan's also sporting green.
You're muted Kevin.
I switched to green, I was feeling left out.
Caitlin, did you happen to hear from? Phil, Bill? Or?
Nyla, no, I have not heard from anyone else.
Okay.
There it fell.
Sorry, I was downstairs working, actually applying my picture framing trade. And I lost sight of time.
Okay, Aaron, are you still there? So we can get started? Okay, perfect, okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for March 15th to order roll call please.
Nyla Frye. Kristen Rungy. Bill Random. Bill's joining right now, Chris Zellner.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Okay, and there's Bill. Caitlin, you have Bill as attending?
Yep, I do.
Okay, perfect. Okay, first item we have is our confirmation of open meeting compliance, go ahead Caitlin.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on March 11th, so final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on March 11th. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on March 11th.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, would anybody like anything pulled or I'd look for a motion?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Bill Random.
You're muted Bill. There you go.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we've got public comment for anybody who'd like to make a comment for any item that's on or off the agenda, if you'd like to, please raise your hand and Todd will bring you in.
Okay, and just a reminder for the public comment period, we have, I think it's two minutes per person. Is that correct? I didn't have, I don't have my notes in front of me, but we do two minutes per person.
Yes, two minutes per person.
Okay, thanks, I have done. Okay, done.
This is actually Jerry, but I'm.
Oh, okay.
We're on his phone. And I'm sure there's somebody that's able to maybe say this a little smoother than me, but I was wondering.
Jerry, can you say your full name and address please?
Jared Ryan Tierney, 6789 Wagner's Vineyard Trail, Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, 53590.
Okay, thanks Jerry.
You know, we've been doing this, this Zoom thing for quite a while. And, you know, some people are real tech savvy and some aren't, and I'm not myself, and we're going on about a year of it, and I, I just thought, would it be maybe smart to maybe at the beginning of each meeting or something, to, to, you know, whoever started the meeting from the village, maybe say something like, hey, if, if somebody sees something wrong with the, you know, agenda, or if somebody sees something wrong with the, you know, the way things are going, or something like that, maybe just raise your hand and speak up kind of at the moment type of thing instead of wait until later, I don't know, maybe that's not a good idea, but something that crossed my mind. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead Todd.
Thanks Jerry. I have Robert McPherson. Go ahead.
Go ahead Robert.
Good evening, Robert McPherson, 7003 Alexandria Court. At the last village board meeting, I spoke on the need for accountability for the actions by certain members of the board. While these comments were strong and intended to be so, they were not vulgar or obscene. Our village needs affordable workforce housing. Our village also needs its elected officials to be the leaders in this area, if they ultimately hold the final decision on most projects moving forward. Despite what the village attorney presented at the village board, I'm sorry, despite what the village attorney presented, the village board has not been unanimous in support of a project that has been thoroughly vetted by multiple programs. During the February 15th meeting, just before entering closed session, President Zellner conducted an informal vote, asking if the board should move forward with the Cohen Ezra funding request. Four trustees voted yes, trustee Hertzberg voted no, and trustees Williams and Random abstained. What transpired in the closed session available to the public lined up this vote. While I understand President Zellner may be frustrated at this information being presented, I find it highly disturbing that he used a later agenda item to publicly admonish citizens for having an opinion, much as he or any other board member can have. Furthermore, he took the opportunity to directly attack the public's First Amendment right, freedom of speech in a limited public forum. I would remind President Zellner that there is established case law that would make it a violation of any commenter's right to make public comments based on whether he agrees with their viewpoints on topics of direct public interest. I assure those listening, if the comments that I made that night were applauding the village for board's actions, Mr. Zellner would have had no problem thanking me and allowing me to be my fully allotted two minutes. While I do not expect an apology for the attacks of that evening, it would be greatly appreciated if the village board could informally but publicly reaffirm a citizen's constitutionally given right to free speech in the limited public forum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other Todd?
I have Linda. Okay, go ahead.
Linda Ashmore, 114 South Street, Wannakee. I have a couple of things, one is that we're going over a year now with the pandemic and people are starting to get vaccinated. So I'm hoping that the village is looking at some way of meeting in person again. As the weather was nicer, we've been able to visit with neighbors out on the sidewalks, and one of the things they're saying is they're not comfortable with the technology, kind of like Jerry Tierney was talking about. And so they feel like they've been shut out of the meetings, which understandable, it's a pandemic, but people are getting vaccinated, so it'd be nice to actually have a timeline of when we're gonna be back in person. The other thing is related to the closed session item with the reorganization tonight. The item sounds like it's partially to discuss the reorganization and partially to discuss compensation and performance. The part dealing with the reorganization, I believe should be done in open session, so, and the other part makes total sense to be in closed session, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other side?
I don't see any hands at the moment.
Okay, I see Nyla Frye has joined the meeting, welcome Nyla. Okay, I've seen no other public comments, we'll move on then, the first item we have is a public hearing, discuss and take action on request by Cohen Ezra to combine two lots by certified survey map at 701 West Main Street. Todd, are you doing this, or Kevin, are you taking this?
I believe Kevin is.
Go ahead Kevin.
We have a, we have a certified survey map that's been recommended for approval by the, by the village's plan commission. And it's really to combine two lots into one, and at seven should I get the address right? At 701 West Main Street, and let me just share my screen for a second. And there's, there's a proposed motion in the packet that the, the person that's making the application, they acquire the property. So the only issue is, is that it doesn't matter if the proposed project goes forward. What, what can only occur is on, once you establish it as, as one lot, there can only be one primary structure on that particular lot. So if they, if they proceed with the acquisition, we wouldn't be in a position to sign off until we had a commitment that one of those primary structures was removed from, from the lot, but other than that, the product, rather, whether or not the project goes forward, doesn't really have an effect on the certified survey map, they certainly have the right to combine those lots, the 2.45 acre lot. So with that, Chris, I know you have a public hearing, if there's any questions after public hearing, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, then I will open up the public hearing for this item for anyone who would like to address the board. Please raise your hand, just like we had during the public comment section, if you have comments.
I'm watching the attendee list, I don't see any hands yet, Chris.
All right, we'll give it, my whole, going once, going twice. Sold, okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and comments from board members with regards to our questions or look for a motion.
Yes, sir, I think that, to my satisfaction, they've answered the safety questions I was concerned about. And I make a motion to approve the certified survey map subject to all staff comments resolved to the satisfaction of the village engineer and condition upon preserving US Incorporated and Cohen Ezies Development Group acquiring the property.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams, do we have a second? Second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments, please raise your hand? Okay, seeing none, call the question Caitlin, roll call vote please.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Gary, you're muted.
I think he's frozen.
And frozen.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Are you putting Gary under abstain, or how are you handling that Caitlin?
I just note that he was missing from the vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have update and discussion on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, Todd?
And it does, does look like.
Sorry, sorry, I missed the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, looks like Gary's coming back in.
Here, we just took our vote, can we go back and do that right now Caitlin, or is that, or Brian, is that okay?
Gary can probably. I think he can, because that was pretty clearly a technical issue.
Internet connection was unstable.
No, it's okay, so we just voted Gary on the Cohen Ezra, it's to you, if you're.
I would approve, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So then we have discussion update regarding COVID-19 pandemic, Todd?
And our local experts, Bill and Scott are here, so I love to hear from both of them on how things are going. One thing I can report on is that our, the library director Eric Plum, along with Scott Russell are working on a potential clinic to serve library staff, not just in Wannakee, but across the region to receive their vaccines, so they're a late coming group. That's gonna be made eligible here shortly, and we're hoping, you know, crossing our fingers that we could be a spot to take care of four to 500 inoculations right here at our library for library, library staff across the region. I'll also mention that just signed, just signed an agreement today with the company that's going to come in, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, but they're gonna be working with us to review our current village hall. The, the recording structure, the meeting room scenario, to help us design a hybrid solution for, as soon as we can, coming out of the virtual only realm and coordinating the opportunity for both in-person and virtual participa- participation in some other meetings, so they're beginning their work this week in fact, and I hope to have some solutions in front of you, in front of the board for consideration in the very near future. And with that said, let me turn it over to, who wants to go first, Bill or Scott? You guys wanna spin the bottle? Bill, Bill, you came off mute first, so you're first.
So our, going back to what Linda was talking about and what you're speaking of.
Hey Bill, just, can you maybe, you're coming off really quiet, can you maybe hold the microphone part of your?
Oh, there we go. Where's my, oh, here we are.
Found.
That's.
Yes, much better. So what, as far as the vaccine, actually the hospital, hospital, three weeks going from 33, we were down to one last week, which is amazing. As far as people in the hospital with COVID, the I, I guess, as far as Linda was talking about the potential to go to open meetings, I think is there, it's just we'd have to have a big enough space, and I don't know if there's a space in the village that would allow that, but to me, it has to be that everybody would have the opportunity to be vaccinated before we got to do it, and that probably will be May or so, so, that's mine, but everything is, on our side is much better than it was two months ago. Thanks.
Go ahead Scott.
Thanks, I'll kind of reiterate what Bill's saying, from our angle, we're kind of seeing the same thing, I can say we haven't seen a single positive patient in going on two months now. The numbers have just been astronomical for us. I keep saying cautiously optimistic, we're hoping we don't see that fourth wave, but with all these vaccines rolling out more and more, as you guys noticed, more people are becoming eligible as we go along. And really, especially in our area, there's been a really good taking to people being willing to get vaccinated and, and those kinds of things, so definitely looking up, I think there is an end starting to become in sight finally. I was really, really happy to see a lot of summer events starting to pop back up and get scheduled, and it's really kind of neat, I know I personally am looking forward to getting out there and having some village events going on again, so on the COVID front, I'm, I'm with Dr. Random on this, we're, we're looking good. I know we're at EMS looking and starting to do our meetings in person too as soon as we can. And we're gonna be having our first in-person training in May, so definitely some exciting stuff going on out there, thank you everybody for taking this so serious and that, stuff the good work, by the end of the year, we should be out of this mess.
Okay, board members, any questions for Scott or Dr. Random? Raise your hand if you do. And I don't either, so thank you guys for that update. Okay, moving on, we're going to update and discussion on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, go ahead Todd.
The, the community learning project scheduling process or registration process is underway, in fact, today's the last day to register. Really excited, at least of a couple days ago, we were up to 100, about 125 participants already. We bought 200 books, I haven't seen final registration as of, well, we'll find out tomorrow, final registration, but I would assume we're gonna be getting up there closer to 200, and that's really exciting, I'm, I'm really thankful for that type of participation. We have volunteers already, about 15 volunteers who are gonna be from that group, serving as small group facilitators to help as part of the process when it kicks off at the end of this month, so looking forward that to get going, very pleased to have sort of forged a partnership with the school district and Wannakee Neighborhood Connection to, to bring that project forward, so excited about that. I wanna get a little bit of discussion with the board tonight about an approach you might care for me to take in talking about special recognition within the village for special events, I'm just, today just having looked to have a little discussion with you and get some feedback. So, sort of a case in point, I guess, back last year, during the, the pride recognition month, I received a request from a citizen that the village recognized pride month by flying a flag, a rainbow flag over village hall. Not that I'm opposed to doing that, that request came, I think it was like the 17th of the month, the month of recognition, and both the first and second board meetings had already occurred that month. And there's no, no standing policy that administration has on how we might going, go about doing special recognitions. And, you know, we can go down the list of those opportunities, I mean, this month is Women's History Month. Was the last month or the month before was Black History Month, and so on, these, we, I expect we'll, we'll see this interest in, and rightly so, as we become a more aware society and a more aware Wannakee. I think these things are gonna start to come sort of front and center for us to consider. And where I'm a little stuck in the role of administrator is what are my, what are the parameters that I need to work within, in terms of saying yes or no to any given group? And, you know, we can spend time going down the rabbit hole, I suppose, of, of the different types of requests that might come forward, but but what I, what I'd like to know is if the, if the village board would like to consider a policy approach to guide administration as those requests come in. I guess the alternative is to simply bring every request as they're considered each individually to the village board for, for their unique consideration. So I want to toss that out there, I'm looking for some help, some advice from you on how you might like staff to, to, to work in proceeding with those sort of circumstances. Again, no action required tonight, this is just a discussion to afford staff with some feedback.
Okay, so feedback from everybody. Does that, does anybody, first off, want to start off? Gary's gonna go, go ahead Gary.
Yeah, I just think, you know, we should almost, to me, we almost should get a list of what you know, is it monthly or weekly, or whatever these events are? And, and how many of these are out there? Are there 12 out there, and we'd have to do one a month? Because I'm afraid if we just kind of open it up as we go, all of a sudden, we're gonna have more than we can handle. It seems like we should identify ones that are out there today, that people are, you know, celebrating and honoring, and so we understand what the all parameters are, because if we approve three of them, someone's gonna come to us and say, why not, why aren't you approving ours? And I would rather find out how many are, how many of these events are out there? So at least we'd have an idea of what we're, you know, getting into.
Well, you're, Gary, I mean, you're hitting straight at what is presented in this as a bit of a challenge. While there definitely are some sort of clear frontrunners, you know, we can probably guess what they are. If you were to go online and search February recognition month, you're, the list, I mean, the list becomes practically endless. We also receive requests from time to time. You know, maybe a business might reach out and say, hey Todd, this, this, this particular month or this particular week is National Chiropractic Awareness Week, as an example. Not to say I don't like chiropractors, I go to one myself. But generally, you know, we, we don't jump at, at those sorts of scenarios to do some sort of special recognition, even like a Facebook plug or anything like that, we don't do that, although occasionally, Chris, maybe be able to remember, occasionally we'll do like a resolution or a proclamation, recognizing a week or a month, I know we had done clerks recognition week before, we've done several of those, but not under any sort of policy guidance, it's all been on case by case basis. But I think Gary, the trick to finding those lists is the list could be endless. And then how do you prioritize the list, I guess, is the, is, would be the challenge in front of the, in front of us? But, I mean, you hit right on, right on the point.
Okay, go ahead Phil, you were, I think you wanted to speak to.
I was going to say, could we get some leadership from what flies over the Capitol? But then again, which capital, the state capital, the capital of US, and is that list extensive enough? I agree with Todd and Gary, it's, it's a big kettle, and once we open it, it's gonna be kind of hard to justify why we chose this group and not another group. Unless we have a standard that we follow nationwide or statewide. Thank you.
Nyla?
Okay, I'm wondering if it's something that we don't need to look at all the possible groups there are, because they're endless. But perhaps have the groups come to us that there, because they are part of Wannakee. Some groups may not even, you know, some things we may not need to recognize because there aren't, isn't the, you know, people aren't interested in it in Wannakee, or it's not happening in Wannakee, I think it should have something to do with it being something that the citizens of Wannakee would like.
Okay, so like, so a local sponsor of sort, and would you, would you imagine that, like that local sponsor would need to actually come present to the village board? It has to kind of come to that level.
Right, because, you know, otherwise we could put a flag out that, you know, people don't even may not even know what it is, if it's not something someone brought to us. It should have some significance for the people in the village.
I think with, I think that's good, my other question then for you Nyla, and for the rest of the board. Do you, as individual board members, qualify as someone to bring something forward, for example? You know, Juneteenth is coming up, I, I've, boy, I've learned a lot about that in the past couple years, I've I've come to appreciate it more than ever before, and it, it sure has come to mean a lot. At least to me personally, I've come to really appreciate what that means, and it but let's say there's no organization that cares to recognize it, but perhaps a board member individually feels that that is a critical point of recognition, and would like to see that recognized somehow, do you see, would you see a board member being eligible to make that request?
I would think that a board member is a resident of Wannakee, but, but we could present it, but it shouldn't have any more weight than if a citizen came and made recommendations.
Okay, thanks Nyla, Aaron, any comments?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think it should be appropriate that one of us could bring something forward. I am interested and definitely agree with the concept of, you know, not to put National Chiropractor Day in the same, you know, necessary way, and I know, I know what you're getting at, like, I am a sucker for like, not necessarily like NPR, it's like, those are good things to shine light on, you know, certain industries and whatever, but maybe, I think a process or some sort of way we can establish, you know, internal communication, and then procedure that, you know, makes it easier on our staff to kind of have the same process. And then also that can be a resource for a business or, you know, community group that wants to highlight, you know, something that's important to them, we could say, here are some suggestions, like, you know. You know. What would be appropriate, um. And maybe part of that could be, you know, part of our conversation with Great One Key is going on about, you know, kind of business. Businesses right now, so maybe we could take it there to the business portion of it, but. Yeah, I think that's appropriate that one of us could bring something.
Okay, Dr. Random.
Um, I guess, are, are we gonna ask them to bring the materials too? Is that what you're suggesting, Todd? Like a flag or whatever?
Oh, we could. Uh, my experience has been that groups that have, uh, per, uh, sort of pursued the recognition from the village often are ready. And willing, if not automatically do, um, either bring back up materials or provide the tools needed. That's been my experience.
So is there a way to put like a wall, like we did the wall by the library? Is there a way to. Basically display the stuff all year or is it a, does it have to be a month thing? I mean, in the month, could it just be put up all the time? I'm thinking about the library or something like that where there's, you know, his space where you.
Billy, you muted yourself.
I see a problem with the number of things you're gonna have. And then the availability of time, space, whatever is that. I guess, if it can work, I'm all for it.
Gary, you put your hand up.
So when I, when I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, you know, some of these things are. I, I just looked up and what do we have a lot in One Key? We have a lot of farmers. National Farmers' Day is October 12th. And that's a day. Some of these events are a week, some of them are a month. How do we, how do we? You know, control this once it gets going?
So. My comments with regards to this is, is if there's a will, there's a way to make something happen. That's, that is for certain. One of the issues that I see with this is, is the flag component. Todd, have you brought this up to Bill and Public Works as far as if our polls that we currently have, have the capabilities to support additional flags first? Second, would we have to erect more flag poles to, to do this? And if, if, obviously we could do that, but that, that would be part of this. I'm just thinking, why wouldn't we have a page, um, on our website that acknowledges whichever group, um, requests us to acknowledge them. Based on what their beliefs are. There could be things that get requested that we may want to say no to frankly. Just, just off the top of my head, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into that and start starting a kind of debate, but. There's things that we may say no to and there's others that we are gonna say yes to, but now we're being discriminatory. So. I, I'm just trying to figure out how we, how we handle that situation.
Okay.
You know, somebody did want us to, to fly a Confederate flag, for example, that's, that's gonna be. Um, and an upsetting thing for people. And would we be able to say no if we've said yes to other groups? Obviously we can, but there's, there needs to be a policy in place, uh, before we do that. And then how many flags can be flying at one time? Um, and do our, do we have the capabilities to do that? So I'm, I'm just thinking of those things out loud as you're, as you're going through this. You know, obviously there's different groups that we, we would want to absolutely get out in front and, and, uh, display, but. I, I just think that you're, you're going in the right direction right now in trying to come up with a policy. I just, I think we're all just hearing this now. And, um, there, there probably needs to be a lot more discussion about this and maybe some things that you could bring up that other communities are doing, um, with regards to this. So I'm, I, I mean, I, I'm assuming we're not the pioneers here. Of this.
You're not, although the, the trick and the challenge behind this is no different for every given community. And, you know, I think that maybe if there's an elemental question to some of this that could help me going forward is the question of. Do you care to make flag poles available for such use on public lands? Now, I will say that we already do that to some extent for Rotary within Rotary Park. Granted that, that park is maintained, it's. Established and maintained by the club itself. So I guess the elemental question is. It is, is a flag flying sort of, um, recognition? And I mean, it's definitely a very, it's very different than a website page, right? I mean, that the statement made by putting a flag upon public property above of our governmental building says something very different than dedicating. You know, a spot within the corner of a website page. Is that? Does, okay, the elemental question is, is the board willing to consider? The flag pole as one of what might be several locations for recognition under a proper policy? Or is that off limits of sorts? And maybe I need to, maybe what I should do, Chris, is assemble all these questions. And allow the board to, to, you know, put him out to you in advance, allow you to think about it. And then have, uh, uh, you know, a more fruitful conversation.
And, and not only us, Todd, we should involve the community in this decision. This is not, I mean. Yeah, we're gonna ultimately make the decision, but the community needs to be involved and we need to, maybe this is a, a, a public hearing item. I don't know. But this is something that is absolutely the community needs to be involved in. And right now we have no community input. We're just hearing about it ourselves. So there's, there's. I think that's the route we need to take.
Okay, and definitely, again, this was not the place to finalize a decision. I was looking for, this is a starting point in introduction.
Is everybody okay with that? I mean, Todd could bring back some ideas and then we need to get community input is what it's gonna come down to. Sound good? Everybody okay? Thumbs up? Okay, sounds good. Perfect. Okay, anything else, Todd, in that?
Nope.
Okay, moving on then, discuss and take action on resolution allowing staff to proceed with 2021 sidewalk replacement project. Kevin?
Yeah, in the packet, there was about five pages worth of sidewalk, uh, replacements that need to occur because of safety concerns. And what our policy is, is that the village pays for half the cost of the replacement. But, uh, by state law, we have to give the homeowner an opportunity to make those repairs themselves. And the state law requires us to give them 20 days. In reality, the cost of the concrete itself is more than half the cost of, of the repair. So there's, there's never been anyone that's ever, you know, made the repairs on their own because it just wouldn't be cost effective for them to do it. So with that, uh, these, it's a pretty good list. It's a pretty strong list, but we need to get these done this year and it'll be included. So. With that, uh, staff recommends approval of the, of the resolution.
Board members, questions for Kevin? Go ahead, Nyla.
Kevin, I've had, um, a, a couple contact me. Because they had some, some work, I believe it was, I, utility work. I don't know if it was with the village or M G N E. Who had, uh, a couple squares of their sidewalk replaced and then the very next year it had, or within two years it had to be replaced again. And their question was, why is it, isn't the word, work initially done? So that it will hold up, um, and from what my understanding of the, um, answer I got was they have to meet a standard with a. So that it will last for one year. My question is, is if somebody, uh, such as a utility company or even us. Have to do work and have to remove slabs on a sidewalk. Why aren't we making a requirement so that we're putting in a better quality sidewalk so it doesn't have to be replaced within a year? Or two?
Yeah, well, you got it, you got it right, Nyla. There's a one-year guarantee and that's the industry standard in terms of workmanship on a sidewalk replacement. And if I've heard the, the same one that you've heard about, it was over on, I think, on, on Fifth Street. That work was actually done in 2005, probably, uh, 15 years ago. So I don't think it was like the two years and there's like a SAG. Uh, from some utility work that we did at the time. So if there's another one that you'd like to just take a look at, be happy to, because if it's, you know, if it's unreasonable and it looks like something failed and without any control of them. You know, within just over the year, you know, that's something we'll work with them on, but, but if it's the one I'm thinking of, it's over 15 years ago. And, you know, we're not gonna get a 15-year guarantee on a sidewalk.
Okay, I understand that, but why is it a one-year guarantee on sidewalks? I mean, sidewalks at, can last 20, 30 years. I don't. Understand what the one-year guarantee is.
Yeah, the one year is, is the industry standard. I don't know of any community that would provide, uh, more than a one-year, uh, guarantee. Uh, all contracts, uh, public and then it might even be some state requirements in terms of, of, of how we'd extend that. But it would be, it'd be out of the norm. Usually you want a, a full. Cycle of, you know, the winter, the summer, everything to, to go through. So that if, if there is a failure, you expect to see that in the first year. But, uh, I can't say I've ever seen a, a guarantee. On a construction project longer than a year. I mean, even when you, when you build a house, I mean, most people know that. You know, you're, you're really limited to that first year after you, after your acceptance. And it's usually more than a year. So if the project is, you know, started in, in the spring. It's typically not till the fall that we accept it. And so it's probably a, a year and a couple of months, uh, worth of, uh, worth of a guarantee. And when you, when you're going, and when you're asking for a guarantee, it's really tied back to the, the bonding, the performance bond and. And I don't know if a company could get a performance bond. You know, a performance bond, it really demonstrates, even if that company goes out of business. We have a bonding company that we can go to and, and require them to make those repair if it, if the, if, if there's a failure in that first year.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Other questions for Kevin? Aaron, go ahead.
Um, just if you could clarify the wording or our process, is this that we inspect 25% of the village and then these are the defective ones we find? Or this is 25% of the defective ones we know about in the village?
No, this is all of the ones we know about. So what our policy says is that we'll inspect 25% of the village on an annual basis. At least on a, on a rolling average. And there are times that we do, you know, do more than 25%. In fact. I think this one is, is well above that 25%. And then we'll also add in all the ones that we get a, a call on or, you know, a complaint on and, and we'll add those to our list. But at a minimum, this is 25% of the village inspection, uh, we did last year. So there, it's not that there couldn't be other ones out there, but every year we, you know, we're, we're, you know, our policy says we'll inspect at least 25% of the village. And I can tell you that we generally go over that, but that is, um, 25% or, or 20% is generally the minimum acceptable standard when it comes to insurance. So if somebody would, would have a claim against the village, uh, we can fall back on our policy and say, you know, we, we have an inspection program, we. We, you know, we do at least 25% a year, which is above what, what the normally is. And that we have a replacement program and it's a way to assure that, uh, so that we're not being. We're staying on top of it. We're not, we're not letting it slide.
Okay, thank you. I just, I guess as we grow, and as 25% gets smaller, um. Just wanna make sure we're staying on top of that, so that's good.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, hey Kevin, we don't do any of the, I know we were doing some of the handicap, handicap ramps because they weren't. To spec or the new spec. That's only with road reconstruction, right?
Correct, with road reconstruction. So, but if there is, uh, there, I, I take it back though, cause in last year we did identify a number of them that we did make, uh, repairs on. And that, you know, the board authorized us to proceed with the ADA plan. And so through that ADA plan, we'll start to identify areas outside of the reconstruction and put a plan together that goes along with that. It's not gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a pretty expensive, uh, you know, proposition to move forward with all these ADA ramps and all the other. Things that go with it. But step one, which is what's been authorized, is the inventory to find out what we really have in terms of, you know. You know, is it, is it half of them? Is, you know, is it, you know, 30% or something in the in-between? That need to be replaced in order to meet the ADA requirements.
Okay, any, any other comments from other board members? Raise your hand. Nyla?
Um, I moved to approve the resolution allowing staff to proceed with the 2021 sidewalk replacement project.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Aaron. I just had a couple of questions. Um, Kevin, do we have, have all these property owners been notified at this point?
No, that, that'll be the next step. So, uh, we pass the resolution, then we mail them, uh, a copy of the resolution.
Okay, and do we still have in place for those who may have financial circumstances that it's difficult on them? Do we still have something in place for those individuals?
That is not included. So if that is something you're, um. You're interested in adding, I'm just looking at the list to see if there's. Any large ones. And there is, there are a couple of large ones. There's, there's a couple that are approaching. A thousand dollars, meaning that their share would be, you know, over 500. So if, uh, I think Renee's still on here, you know, if you want, you certainly can implement that same. Policy, I think they were over a dollar, a certain dollar amount would allow them to extend it over a number of years.
Um, we, last year it was a, a, just for the one year, um, but it was any dollar amount. They could either pay it. In an installment plan over three years, or they could defer it for one year, or they could pay it timely. So, um, but. When that resolution was adopted last year, that was just for a, a single year, but you could, um, do something to extend that. If you wanted to do another year. I would say nobody took advantage of the three-year installment plan. Um, but there was a number of people that, um. You know, didn't pay, um, timely so that if they don't pay next year, um, by the deadline, then it will go on their tax bill.
Okay, uh, I just feel like there should be something in there for some sort of relief for people that may need it, especially coming out of COVID here, um, if people do, do have some hardships. So. I would make a fr- friendly amendment to add that into what we're doing. If we could have that, Nyla. You made the motion, so. Is that a yes, Nyla?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, and our second was with Aaron. Are you good with that?
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, so with that said, any other comments? Okay, call the question, Caitlin.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action on organizational review of engineering and public works department, including job descriptions for community development director. Engineer, community development and public works office manager, public works director and communications and management intern. And action on updated village wage, village wage scales. Todd, are you introducing yours, Caitlin?
Uh, well, I saw Caitlin disappear, so I came on, but then she came back, so I think I'll, I'll let her take it. She's, she's ready to provide a presentation to the village board. I would just add that Caitlin and I have been, um, we've had our listening ears on, going back to, uh, my grade school days. It's actually good lessons from grade school teachers to put your listening ears on. Uh, and we have, uh, in talking to members of the board, to, uh, our staff team who are impacted. And I think what we're presenting is certainly different than what you saw a month or two ago. Um, and addresses a number of things that we've learned and Caitlin's gonna go over those with you.
So first I will share. The presentation. Can everyone see my slideshow? Okay, cool. So just a reminder, I think it's always important to kind of review where we've been in this process. So on the slide, it's just kind of a timeline of our process to date. This project kicked off in June, uh, with Todd and I having an initial kickoff meeting and planning session with our consultants. If you remember. In January, during your January 4th meeting, um, our consultants with Public Administration Associates, Chris and Kevin joined us. So that was in June of 2020, we kicked off that, that process with them. In the month of July, um, the consultants held interviews with member of staff members in the village and our outside engineering and planning consultants. From August to December, the consultants, consultants really reviewed the internal, external information they collected. If you remember, as part of their study, they did look externally as to. What do our peer organizations, um, or peer communities do in terms of this, this, our. Sorry, my dog ran in here and it really threw me off. So, um. They really looked to our peer communities to see what is their engineering and public works departments look like and they collected that data. December, the consultants formulated a proposal or reorganization that was reviewed by us as village administration. Then that brings us to January of 2021. Um, you remember your January 4th meeting, the initial presentation of the findings and recommendations were given by the consultants to the village board and staff. After that meeting, um, Todd and I had, um. Numerous follow-up conversations and gathered additional feedback from the village, village staff and village, our village outside service providers. In February, we really took in that information. We made revisions to proposal based on that feedback. And the consultants completed their, um, external review of our outside engineering spending and they created their report. That brings us to here in March where we are considering the updated proposal. So also a reminder, here is a summary of what our current, um, organizational structure looks like. You'll see we have a public works and village engineer and underneath that position, we have an office manager, a construction manager and the streets and parks superintendent. Underneath the construction manager, we have seasonal engineering interns that we hire, um, every year. There's about two that we hire every year and they work full-time over the summer months. Underneath the streets superintendent, streets and parks superintendent, we have a foreman, 10. 10 crew members, a fleet maintenance technician, and then we also have seasonal crew members that we hire in that department. Um, our budget allows up to five FTE, um, and they work full-time over the summer months. We also have a number of contracted services that fall underneath this, this organization or this part of our organization. We have planning and zoning, building inspection and outside engineering. So here's a summary of all of the, it's a lot of words on this slide, but all very valuable feedback that we received. Um, so this is all from meetings and feedback we received since January 4th. So overall, the majority of comments we received have been supportive of our overall, overall reorganization plan. The next bullet is bolded for a reason because this is probably the number one, piece of feedback we received and we really listened to and we agree with. There's, there was concerns regarding the concept of having only an engineering tech in-house. If you remember that original proposal, um, really only had for in-house engineering staff as a technician position. There was concerns about the level of development and projects, um, that we have in the village of Wanakee and that it deems necessary to elevate that position. We also heard a desire to create a public works crew lead position to assist with the day-to-day operation of the department under the new system. Um, if, if we go through with the proposal of elevating Bill Frederick to a public works director and having a foreman, really someone that can help that foreman with day-to-day management of the department. There was concerns we, we heard regarding moving economic development assistance, um, shifting that out of, out of administration and down to the office manager position under that proposal. Um, there were some concerns about capacity, um, if, if, um, the office manager can really support public work, support community development, support an engineer and support economic development. So there were some concerns here about that.
And maybe just a quick, quick elaboration there. So, you know, talking about exactly who the people are in this scenario. Uh, so currently the administration department is also the economic development department. Kylie West is the executive assistant for the administration and clerks department. And has been doing, I think, you know, aspects of, of day-to-day coordination for elements regarding economic development activity. So, uh, the, this, the proposal in shifting economic development fully to community development department would have seen that, that administration assistance, administrative assistance also shift to, in this case it would be Tracy Minnolds. So, uh, that, that was the concern we heard about the capacity, uh, in Tracy and her position and her duties.
Thanks for providing that, um, more background, Todd. There was also concerns we heard from both the village board and others regarding our budget for outside consultants. And if under the new reorganization plan, would we result in having to budget more for those outside consultants? Uh, we heard a desire to move quickly on hiring of the new positions to allow for some training and overlap with current employees who may be, um, leaving the organization due to retirement. There was a desire heard for the village to start using its comprehensive plan more as a guiding tool instead of a reference document. We heard willingness from both of our outside consultants to support this reorganization and be a resource to the village moving forward. And as we transition, um, from current staff to new structure. A lot of, a lot of our conversations, um, with staff and consultants, we really heard an emphasis on the need to continue our excellent communication skills moving forward as we onboard new staff and transition to this new structure. Uh, we need to be able to have honest conversations about what's working, what's not working and be willing to make changes as necessary to make sure that this is successful. And there's also was an expressed interest to expand our GIS mapping, mapping capabilities, that we currently use. So we've, we've heard some feedback from both public works and other departments who are interested in expanding our GIS mapping capabilities. So that's just a laundry list of the top concerns and advice and feedback we received since our January 4th meeting. So probably more important than just listening is, um, how we modified our proposal based on that feedback. Um, so the number one, the big one that I kind of highlighted on the previous slide was we adjusted that engineering technician position to a dedicated professional engineer with civil engineering experience. So you'll see that, um, in our updated proposal, proposal that you'll proposed organization structure that you'll see in a second. Uh, we also created a lead crew member position in the public works department to help with that day-to-day operation capacity. We, we would treat this as like an internal, um, promotion or placement into this. It would just be, um, an incentive pay added to someone's hourly wage. Um, I've already kind of started talking to Bill about how we would do this. We'd probably hold some sort of, you know, submit a letter of interest to be this crew lead person, hold some interviews and then appoint someone to be the crew lead position. We also, on the redraft of the reorganization, um, include the continuation of administration executive assistant to support the economic development functions, um, community development director. So that hits on what Todd was just talking about. We're proposing that Kylie West continue to assist the community development director with economic development functions. And she was excited to continue that. She really enjoys supporting economic development. So when we were initially talking to this about her, she was kind of sad that maybe economic development was going to be taken away from her roles. But, um, she's definitely willing and excited to continue to help in that aspect. Um, we had an independent outside review and analysis of the village's engineering spending on outside, engineering services for the last three years, more to come on that. Um, and then we had direct conversations with our outside consultants and their anticipated level of need under the new system. Some feedback we really see from our engineering consultant was a willingness to always review and consider the best and most economic approaches to meet village needs, both staffing and financial. Um, he noted that a robust engineering service provider does bring a variety of engineering talents and skills that address unique elements of municipal tasks. We also heard from our planning consultant that he advises that the village can expect a long-term reduction in outside spending for planning services under the new structure. Um, he really thinks that the community development director will be able to handle, um, many of the tasks that he does for site review, comp plan, not necessarily writing the comp plan, but, um, making sure that the complaint is used more as a guiding document. So more of that planning and development stuff. And then we also are currently exploring the potential of a GIS technician position to be shared with the Wanakee utilities. So next, um, we will go into the village board all received. Our outside consultants were unable to attend tonight due to prior commitments. So we did film a voice memo with our, with Kevin Bruner, with public administration associates who did a lot of the contracted, who did the contracted service analysis for the village. Um, so all the village board members, uh, reviewed that, that voice memo in preparation for this meeting. But the findings from that outside analysis is a total hours of outside engineering for a three-year period, totaled about almost 8,000 hours, the total cost of 1.2 million. And that's a mixture of village costs, rebills, capital projects. Please note that this is not a deep dive analysis, but rather just demonstrating the notable significance of the expenditures. Um, and so, and then adjusting and prioritizing projects and management in collaboration with contracted engineers could yield a potential overall savings for the village. So the recommendation of that report was the village should continue its discussion to bring some of the contracted engineering services in-house. The village should include as part of the reorganization, an engineer position with municipal experience in plan design and construction engineering.
And I would just clarify there, uh, PE, professional engineer as notable in that recommendation.
So taking all of that feedback we received since January, uh, we have a proposed updated organizational chart, um, that I will walk us through right now. So first of all, up here you have, um, the village administrator position and underneath the village administration, and you have, uh, community development director. This would be a new hired, new position for the village. And then you have the public works director, which is a dedicated public works director. And we are, we are, um, recommending the promotion of Bill Frederick into that public works director position. Underneath the community development director, you'll see Tracy Minnolds, who would serve as the community development and public works office manager. And this is again, um, she's, she currently fills the role of office manager. This would just be a great adjustment for her to, um, formalize the added responsibility she will get. Underneath the community development director, we're including the contracted services of planning and zoning. So this community development director will oversee the planning and zoning contract and the building inspection contract. As we discussed, you'll see this right up here. This is the executive assistant in administration. And she is going to continue to provide economic development support to the, um, community development director. You'll see that there's this dotted lines crisscrossing here that is showing that while Tracy is going, while this position of office manager is going to report directly to the community development director, she, this position will also receive some duties and responsibilities from the community development director. So these cross lines kind of represent, um, dual reporting. But when it comes down to who, who do they report to on paper, who does their annual evaluation, who approves their time off? That will be the person who is directly above them. You see that same dotted line between the community development director and the engineer as well. Then we have underneath Bill and the public works, we have that engineer, the PE engineer. We have them reporting directly to the public works director. Underneath that engineer will be the contracted engineering services and our seasonal part-time engineering interns. Then on the public, the streets and park side of things for this department, we have, we still have the public works, streets and parks foreman position. Then here you're going to see that lead crew member, which was that feedback we, we talked about that we received. So we're designating a lead crew member, the new of your other crew members, your fleet technician and your seasonal public works, our crew members. Then, um, we have this proposed communications and management intern, which is something that we're hoping to continue through this reorganization, to have a greater emphasis on our organization for communications. So, uh, we're proposing for hiring of an intern to start off this journey. And then, um, hopefully within a year or during the 2022 budget, we can get a full-fledged communications manager position budgeted. You'll see these purple blobs. They say Wanakee Utilities and that represents a cost sharing. Uh, the Wanakee Utilities is, is investigating or going to be discussing a formal partnership with the village to help, for two positions. And I know Tim is also on our, on our Zoom right now, so he can answer more when we get to the utility side of things. But as of right now, it's proposed utilities will cover 25% of the engineer position and 25% of the communications position. Let's talk implementation timeline of this proposal. Right now, as we said, we're sitting here in.
Caitlin, can I jump in?
Yes, you may.
Can you go back to the, can you go back to the last slide actually? You know, I, as I was looking at this, at this, um, actually just today, I was realizing that there's a, a question that really isn't answered. And I, um, um, it's, I've definitely been thinking about it for, for months. But, um, we didn't sort of put it together as it, as it, as a real question that deserved an answer. So, so the difference between this chart and the chart you saw a few slides ago is that the village administrator doesn't have a slash after it. There's no economic development director connected to that. Does that mean that the village administrator should go part-time? I, I bet there might be some people who think that's not a bad idea. But, uh, I did spend time thinking, thinking about a couple of questions and I, you know, I sent an attachment to the village board, um, earlier today. And I, I just want to bring that up and, um, kind of talk about how I see this also, um, impacting my role for the organization. So, oh, thanks Caitlin, you took that off. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. Thumbs up. You can see it. Okay. Thank you. So how does this change impact the role of a village administrator? So you know, the things that jump off the page to me, there's probably going to be more that in this than we learned. But that, that's really the ability for me to be, to help you, to help the village board be better at its job. Consider, you know, consider for example, new orientations for elected officials. And then the, the freak, the frequency of check-ins, um, and engagement with the board to help you be successful. The ability to increase collaboration, uh, with the deputy admin and clerk and overseeing, um, development of our organizational culture. Essentially that's talking about human resources management. Um, I think one thing that Caitlin might admit, um, is that the, the hats she's been, the hats that she wears in her interest, unique role now, which is that of deputy admin, village clerk and also serving as the primary HR manager. In all respects, takes away a little bit from each of those duties to do a really great job. And, and, um, so what I see here is the ability for the administrator to step back in to some of that HR management, uh, especially where there's great benefit to have top leadership, demonstrating and being a part of, uh, organizational cultural changes. So, so that, that will, some of that will come back, which I think is healthy for our organization. I put several things there that where I see the administrator becoming more engaged in the community where, uh, in the past it could sort of was only maybe sort of at a surface, surface or at a edge level. And I added here groups not yet known to desire more village involvement. Uh, that this presenting the opportunity for the administrator to say yes, as opposed to no, my plate is full. Similarly with regional organizations, I think there are several, again, where administrators have been only to sort of play it, uh, to side, kind of side swipe these organizations as opposed to engaging them for positive benefit coming back to the village as a result. Now, one item jumps off the page. As you know, I've been trying really hard to play, place great priority on our diversity, equity and inclusion pursuits. And our cultural growth, both inside the village as an organization, as an employer, but also through our community, throughout our community. That's, you know, that certainly that, that's put, uh, it's good pressure. But it, um, you know, has definitely presented time pressure upon the role that the administrator plays. And, um, you know, we, there needs to be a little bit of a relief valve, so to speak, to allow us to continue making that a priority and allowing the administrator to pursue it. Intergovernmental relationships are critical and I, I, you know, I put bold there. Building and strengthening our work with the Wanakee Community School District as something that, uh, could be pursued, uh, more intently, along with other partnerships around us. As you know, we've done community surveys, we've had some visioning and mission discussions with the board. But you might agree with me that that's a never got past talk. Is, you know what I mean? You know, we, we, we've, we've talked about it. We've put some ideas in place, but never has the, have those ideas turned into strategy? That's become part of our organizational change and, um, how we design our budget, et cetera, et cetera. We've not connected the dots with that work. And really that's because of just the pressures placed upon admin staff with our current structures. So that could become, uh, more intent to work. So while economic development day-to-day work is moved and shifted in the proposed organization, that doesn't mean that the admin, not just be me, but whoever the admin might be, is completely off, you know, hands off of economic development. Certainly there's going to be some high-level elements of economic development attraction and pursuit, and support required from the administrator. But what that does do, I think we're creating the opportunity for the community development director to take on a role and give it more eager intense effort. And there I listed some things that jump off the page that deserve that sort of work. Evaluating our transportation system for the good of our economic engine. Evaluating our labor supply and the, the burden that our employers have faced with a difficult labor environment. Engaging the chief executives in our businesses more routinely, along with commercial brokers more routinely. There's again, networks we can engage with better. Um, and then I think one thing I will tell you, I'll just be really honest. When, uh, site selectors work on behalf of major companies and corporations to help them find their next best spot. Those come across my desk almost monthly. The, the rigor involved in providing responses and reactions and the data to support those responses to site selector requests are something that I just simply have not been able to do. Now, with that said, we don't have a lot of big development sites, which are oftentimes expected, with a site selector request. But regardless, I, I mean, it, I mean, that's a, that's a quick move it to the folder. Uh, can't address it with the other needs imposed upon the administrator position. So, um, I think we can get back into the business of considering when we could be in the ballpark for a potential project. So, um, I wanted to give some time to that because I, I think we glanced, I've glanced over it in the past. And I, I, I wanted you to see how I saw this helping us as an organization, helping me be better as, um, your administrator and as the community administrator. So hopefully that helped a little bit. So hopefully that helped a little bit. All right, back to you Caitlin.
Okay, let me share my screen again.
Are you were on like a perfect roll, you were just, and I totally ruined it.
Okay. I'm just trying to get back to the slide we were on. All right. Okay. So just one of the, okay, so let's talk about implementation timeline. So we are in March. As we all know, St. Patty's Day this week, so I'm appreciating everyone's green. But tonight we are asking for the village board to consider adoption of the reorganization. And which includes approval of some, the job descriptions and wage scales. If approved tonight, administration Todd and I are ready to hit the ground running and start the recruitment. Of our community development director and engineering position recruitment.
And I would add Caitlin, that's part, part of March involves that too. If approved tonight, it's within a couple of days that the job ads will be posted.
Absolutely. And then in May, we would do April slash May, depending on how quickly we can get those job descriptions up. We like to give especially for larger positions like this engineer and C D D, we like to give candidates ample time to get their materials ready. So we'll see the job posted for three to four weeks, just to make sure that we give enough notice to potential candidates and give them time to get all their materials ready. So then end of April and May will be the process of interviewing and selecting these candidates. With a hopeful selection in mid-May, mid to early May. So that we can hopefully give that person enough time to give notice to their employer, accept our position, just the standard recruitment. Window for them. And then June 1 is our reorganization implementation. Which this would include promotions and grade adjustments for current employees and anticipated start of the community development director, engineer and communications intern.
Can I throw one thing in there Caitlin? If, if there is to be a wrench in any of this, it would be. In the process of a recruitment, if we don't find the right person. I mean, our hiring decisions folks is, are the most important decisions we make. And they're long-term, they're long-term impact decisions. So if, if we are in a process feel there is good reason to fail the recruitment. Obviously that returns us to the process and may even return us. And if we don't get a single applicant based on elements of the reorg for any of the either position. And we're like, okay, what's wrong with the organization? What's wrong with the wage scale? You know, you start to look at those things. I mean, I certainly expect candidates coming forward, but, but what I tell all my department's heads is never in our recruiting process, should we ever, ever settle? We should not feel the need to settle to get somebody working on June 1. We ought to feel the need to get the best person. If that means that there are more weeks added to this process because of a failed search, that's the way it would have to go. And I think in that, in that arrangement, if that were the case. The note to the right on the screen, in that we would be, you know, really needing to rely on our outside services and contract providers. In these gap times to be of assistance, to keep, keep us cooking and cranking along. You know, we're going to have to look at that as our, our supply, our source to, to keep going if we're faced with that choice.
Thanks for that note, Todd. I a hundred percent agree. A lot of times when we're recruiting for these types of position, the fit is really important and we need to take our time to make sure that we are getting the right fit for our organization. So with that, let's talk about budget impact. On the left-hand side, you'll see our current budget, uh, which is our total terminal wages and budgets. And then on the right-hand side, you're going to see the budget impact for the proposal. I have it broken off into two different areas. The first one is promotions, the lead position and grade adjustments. And the total of that, um, you'll see that that we're estimating that's for, so the. Left-hand side shows you five months of expenses. So through the end of May, what we're anticipating to spend. For out of our current budget and that leaves us a remaining or difference amount of 360,000. The right-hand side, you go into our impact of the proposal. Again, for the promotions, lead position and grade adjustments, we're anticipating that to be a 201,000. Then you have your newer positions, which include this community development director, engineer and intern. Again, anticipated six, one start date of these people and these positions being jointly funded with the Wannakee utilities picking up. 25% and the village share of 75%, you get that initial or, or anticipated budget impact. And you come down to the total for this new re-proposal for the, its impact on the budget, the 2021 budget. And you'll see that we are anticipating a budget savings for 2021 if we implement this new proposal of 13,602,74 cents. As we outlined in the analysis for contracted services, the village has sufficient monies budgeted for outside. Contract services to assist with the transition to the reorganization and to continue to fight, to provide services to the village. We do not anticipate a need to increase our budget for outside services due to this reorganization. The, and as you remember or note from the study, we anticipate an overall savings in the longer, a villages use for expenses related to those outside services.
I think, I think I want to, I don't want to stick my head in the ground and, and, you know, come forward to the board and put in front of you a bait and switch. So that, that is actually not, not what, not what I want to do with, in fooling anybody. So it really def- definitely in that last sentence Caitlin read there. We do see as, as we have the new talent brought into these positions settling in. And when our organization kind of starts to rerun on all cylinders really well. I think we will see efficiencies and our consultants believe we will see efficiencies, fiscal efficiencies as a result. Do I think that year one out of the gate or here this year is going to be cheaper than in the past in consulting services? I don't want to sit here and say that that would be in, if it, uh, expected. In fact, you know, um, I think relying on the wisdom that we have in Kent Strauss and his team. It strand is going to be really, really critical and important. As we have a new engineer and community development director brought on board. And the role that they're going to be playing in review of project proposals and our construction projects. The knowledge that Kent has in his team institutionally here is going to need to be relied on. So, so I just don't want to plead, please, if you, you know, I, I do not want to be fooling. The, the village board that that's an expectation right here. And when we look at, you know, when we look at something, you know, that's a modest budget savings 13,000. Is that enough to cover what might be additional expenses? Now, I, I just don't want to guarantee that right here today. So again, trying to be blunt and upfront with you about how, how this might roll out.
All right. Next, I just want to touch on, as we've stated, there is a proposed partnership with Wannakee Utilities. Currently they would help us fund the engineer and communications intern. The total estimated impact on the utilities budget is just over 22,000. The utilities commission will be discussing this partnership at their meeting on, upcoming on Monday, March 22. If the utilities commission chooses not to pursue the partnership, uh, we recommend the village board approve implementation of alternative A. And I will go over alternative A now. So alternative A is if, again, if they don't implement the partnership. We would eliminate the communications and management intern position from the reorganization. And then we would shift the funding for that position to the cover the costs of hiring the engineer position with a hundred percent of the expense coming from the village. The village would then revisit the creation of the communications position in our 2022 budget discussions. And below here, you'll see an impact on this alternative A, we're still anticipating or projecting a budget savings. You'll see it's a little bit higher than the original recommendation, just because we're getting rid of that intern position and just shifting everything to. To fund for that engineer position. With that, um, the action we're requesting tonight at the village board is first to discuss this consideration, ask questions. We're, we're ready and. Really want to hear your feedback and questions, but our action recommended to, or we're asking tonight is that. The village board adopt the reorganization plan, which includes approval of the job descriptions. Adoption of the villages updated wage scales, endorsement at the proposed implementation plan. And then we added a fourth bullet, um, and if the utilities does not approve partnership, authorize village administration to implement alternative A.
And Caitlin, do you just want to quickly address the, the tweak to the engineer job description that you saw in your packet?
Oh yeah. Um, so. I mistakenly uploaded the wrong engineering job description. I've been working on several over the last couple of months. We did tweak the job description for the engineer to have a P E required. You'll, if the one in the packet doesn't say that, um, the one I was supposed to upload does. So the job description for the engineer would be a P E required position.
I did send that out, kind of. Last minute here to the, to the board an hour or two ago. So you do have that new PDF version of the job description. I think the only relevant. Difference on that in fact, is the P recognition under qualifications and experiences required.
So I apologize for that mistake. So with that, we'll open it up for feedback, question, comments from the village board.
Okay, board members, questions? Please raise your hand. Nyla.
I guess the more I hear, the more questions I have and listening to all of the details about what Todd could expand on. The quick, and then I know that in the future we have ADA plans to look at a possible industrial park. EMS restructuring. So with all these things that are going on and the village growing in leaps and bounds. I'm wondering if, um, as well as, you know, looking at what we're looking at. How long it'll be before we need a separate economic director and a separate community development director? That's just going through my head. Like I said, I hate to throw a wrench into spokes of all of this. But that question is going through my mind when I listen, listen to the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Bill Random.
I guess this is bad feedback for you guys or not?
No.
All right, I, I guess I have a few questions. First, did we hear from engineering or public works? Have they been part of the process as far as guiding the, the restructure?
Sorry, I couldn't understand the first half. Did we hear from who?
And public works, have you guys, have they been part of the process?
Yep, yep. As I said, in the, after their January 4th, those last two months, we've just been listening and having meetings with all members of the departments.
And then, um, I guess my, I, I'm most impressed when I look at our town as far as the hard structures, like the, the roads and. General parks and everything, uh, uh, separate from our, are they going to be separated from our, I see, I see that as a separate process. Development and is that, is that identified in here or not?
Do you catch that Caitlin? I think he's asking about the infrastructure work, road construction, utility work. Parks probably. Do you want to go over that?
Yeah, um, we would, we would, um, we're seeing that house underneath the public works and engineering side of things. So Bill and the engineer would work hand in hand on those types of projects. Same with parks. Um, I know there's a great partnership between Bill and Sue already, and that would just continue with when it comes to parks, infrastructure improvements. Or building a parks and shelter, shelters like that. So we're still anticipating handling that in-house as much as our expertise allows us to, um, as we have in already.
So this is another good way to put it, Bill. The public works director would be the assigned staff lead to the public works committee. That does a lot of review of, of our construction projects and then forwards those up to the village board. The, uh, and also would play a role whenever other approvals are required. I mean, sometimes the plan commission is involved. If that, that's the case, the public works director, Bill Frederick would be helping with that discussion. But staffing the community or sorry, staffing the plan commission would be the community development director. Also that person would be doing staffing the C D A.
But with, with all of our projects in, in our community of our size and the staff our size, it does require a lot of collaboration beyond our own departments. And we, we anticipate that collaboration between departments to continue underneath. It's an expectation of Todd and I, that departments collaborate on projects.
So can you hear me still? Because mine is, I guess my question is that we have these residential projects and then we have the. Industrial projects. And to me, it seems like those, at some point we need to separate that. We've had more troubles, if you will, with these residential. Projects and is that maybe something we should separate into a separate group altogether?
Yeah. So let's just talk about, I think what you're referring to is we, we currently have a technical staff meeting that meets once a month. That kind of reviews all of the development and projects happening. We see that leading of that technical staff team falling underneath the community development director. For those types of review of subdivision plaits, review of like a Hy-Vee coming in, that sort of stuff would be led. By the community development director, but that collaboration comes in because at that table would be the engineer. Would be, you know, the bill from a public work standpoint. Brian, our village engineer attends a lot of those. So that we still see that technical staff. Functioning, it'll just be run by the community development director.
Okay, Bill, is that everything? Okay, Gary? Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, when I look at the organization, why you have it set up, I like the fact that we don't have any major reconstructs on the roads this year. Bill Fredericks is a very, very capable and he'll put way too many hours in kind of guy. And Rick Moran is, you know, got the respect of the guys out there. I mean, I see that side is very transparent. We won't miss a beat. I, I've got a couple of questions on, I wish, I hope that utilities. And the village can get together on the intern position, the G I S position is so important. And it's more important as we do things like this, we make changes with staff. Right now we have a number of people leaving not only the village, but utilities. That have 25 years of knowledge of how things were done in this village and why they were done a certain way. And when we lose that. It's really important that we have a G I S system that tracks this stuff. Because it's right now, it's everybody's in their mind. I sat in tech staff meetings and it's amazing to sit and listen to these guys talk about. Well, I remember when we did this street 12 years ago, and here's why we did this. When you lose that knowledge, it's going to be more difficult going forward. So the more. If we can use technology today with G I S to, to, to map these things and track them, I think it's important. So hopefully we can get that position in place. We, we've always had a great relationship with joint plan on Westport and I'm curious on. Did Kevin, who used to chair joint plan or not?
As far as staffing, I think Kevin, even in Tom Wilson sort of tag teamed that staffing. And then I, I, I'm pretty sure Tracy did a majority of the administrative support.
So one of my, one of my questions is where does that, because I think we need to have. Either engineer or our planner at the table on the joint plan. I don't know who that is.
But I would, I would say that that's going to fall under the community development director, just like plant commission follows under them. They would also, and we're not anticipating any changes to Tracy's administrative support of the joint plan commission that continues moving forward under this proposal. Um, but I, unless Todd disagrees, I think the, the community development director would oversee or would be the villages representative at that joint plan.
Well, I, I agree with you Caitlin, but I also am hearing Gary and I'm agreeing with him. That engineering is going to be critical in those discussions too. So I, I, I would expect that it will not be unusual for our on-staff engineer. To be in, in attendance at many of the plan commission and, and or joint plan meetings.
And then will the planning commission, will that be kind of run by our community development person?
Yeah, that person would be really given the reins on. The, the entire development review process. You know, the, the type of person I hope will be able to hire is going to be someone who is, you know, call them a, a master facilitator. And coordinator and, and that, that, that person's going to be in charge of fostering, fostering those processes.
In my last, my last comment is, you know, with the, with the. We have the calendar laid out, it makes sense. If we get people, you know, on the job by the, uh, the end of May, first of June. we have the calendar laid out, it makes sense. If we get people, you know, on the job by the, uh, the end of May, first of June. My concern with that is, I, I don't have concern about Bill because Bill can handle, you know, we're resurfacing, we're doing sidewalk, we're doing things that Bill can handle. My concern is bringing an engineer in here that doesn't have experience with us, not only us, he doesn't have experience with Westport. I, I, I don't know how we can work, and I don't, I have no idea what you know, Kevin's dates are right now, but I don't know if he's staying through June. I'm, I don't know, but I would share like a transition period in there for at least our village engineer. I mean, Kevin's knowledge of this community and Westport would be well suited, cuz I feel terrible for an engineer who would walk in here blind, you know, and not know the history and how things have been and how, you know, how projects flow. I think that's so critical. And if we miss out on that, you know, I don't care if we gotta bring Kevin in a day or two a week. Do something. I mean, we talked about this thirteen thousand dollars we save here or there. We don't know if that's true, but it, it sure makes sense. If we have to spend a little of that money to help that engineer out, because he's gonna be by himself. I mean, there's nobody here that has the engineering background that's gonna step up and say, well, I can help you. I remember how we did this. And I, I feel terrible for the engineer because he's gonna get blindsided time and time again if we don't give him some help.
But let me just add, or she.
Or she.
Women's, women's history month, Gary. No, I, I, I know you're, you're on a roll, so I'm, I'm kinda picking on you. Um, you know, I think that, well, two things to share. Uh, one is, um, as I said earlier, to, you know, we do have great institutional knowledge as well with Kent and his team. There will be some weight there. Can we expect that that's where all the weight's placed? That sounds pretty expensive to me. I, I did discuss with Kevin even today a little bit about how a transition could look and work for him and what he may be willing to do uh in a post-employment situation. And I think it would be best to discuss that when we get into some of our uh discussion during closed session. But, you know, I guess I'd like to maybe ask that, ask you to kind of, you know, sort of put a staple in that that thought right now and that concern, which is really valid. And uh, and let's talk about that in just a little bit.
I'm good.
Is, is Kevin gonna join us in closed session then? So we know what's going on there.
Well, let me, let me, uh, no, I do not expect him to join us in closed session. So let me ask Kevin if, if, if he'd be willing to share what he shared with me earlier today in terms of this aspect of transition and change. Are you comfortable, Kevin, doing that?
Sure. No, I, I think you could probably just read what I sent you and Chris today. And, and just in summary, it says that, you know, if I, you know, leave this summer, I'll stay on as a volunteer unpaid as a resource through, you know, till November. So that, that new guy can come in, I'll be a resource to them. I'll be a resource to the village board, a resource to the, you know, the new staff, the existing staff. I'm, I'm not going anywhere. I'm, I'm gonna be around. We're not, we're not moving out of, you know, we're not moving out of the state permanently. We're gonna be here permanently, long-term. But, you know, temporary or, you know, winters, we're gonna be like bailing out of here, you know, sometime in, you know, October. So I'm, I'm here in, and I'm sure my wife would be happy to get me out of the house and doing stuff.
Let me just add, Phil and Gary, that some of that will make, some of that will make more sense when we talk in a little bit in closed session. As to why that, why Kevin's comfortable with that approach.
Okay.
Thanks for sharing, Kevin.
Yep.
Okay, Phil, any comments?
Yeah, um, to a degree, I'm a little bit confused by all this. It's a little, uh, little hurried for the way I try to operate. But a couple of observations, uh, I see us adding a layer here of uh management, and I don't, long-term, we can't kid ourselves, there's not gonna be a savings. So that aside, I'm, I, I can reconcile myself to paying more for getting more, but we're gonna have another layer up at the top of people. Going forward, uh, you know, when we, we've worked with parks, I've always, we've always worked with Sue McDay, I always thought, you know, this Bill take over all this planning that she's been doing? I don't understand uh how much is leaving her and how much is taking over. Caitlin, do you move up into one of those top things up there or do you? Or is there any change with you? I don't understand what your role is going forward totally. So uh, I uh, I'm just not quite ready yet, but I'm still listening, so.
Yeah, so we, we anticipate that the relationship between Bill and Sue to continue. Uh, Sue and Bill work together on a lot of the parks projects. Sue kinda does through the parks committee. She kind of envisions the project and then her and Bill get together on how to implement it. Um, so we don't see that changing for Sue or Bill. It's just, you know, moving forward, that will continue. My role in all of this is um the communications intern. The communications intern, the communications intern would report to me. So that's the only reason why I'm on, on that chart. Um, it's just to show that that position would report to me.
But Caitlin, Caitlin already sits as a department head with our, within our organization.
I hope that provides some clarity, Phil. If you have any other questions, let me know.
A little bit, but like I say, I'm still concerned. We are adding a layer at the top and there will not be a savings under this. We may, uh, we may have a little bit of gap for a couple of months or we'll do it. But we may as well plan for a few more dollars uh as a result of this.
I think the one, the one thing I'll, I'll share, I'll share with you, Phil, and um, I think I, I shared with the board before information from Middleton. Um, a, a growing city, not unlike ours, that not too long ago, three or four years ago, took what was a joint administrator slash economic development position. Mike Davis served in both of those roles and took the community development, uh, economic development duty away from the administrator into the position that Abby Uton um fills there with the city of Middleton. And why, why is that happening? Um, it, it's, it's a phenomenon that we share with Middleton, and that's one of growth. We are a growing community and the complexity of that, um, thanks to uh robustness of a workforce that has to grow and a level of service that can, that receives greater pressure is a big part of why we're talking about things becoming a little more complex. I'd like, believe me, I, I, I would have no problem remaining simple and streamlined and uh, you know, without change. That, that is certainly the easiest thing for all of us to swallow. But that is not the world I feel that our organization lives in as we continue to change and grow.
I agree, but remember, plan for more dollars. If you're adding people, you're gonna have more dollars.
I'm, I'm not gonna stick my head in the sand on that, Phil.
Go ahead, Nyla.
Uh, one thought, um, a lot of the communities that we had examples of, of what they're doing. I believe they were cities and there's a major difference between a city and a village. Chris is um, you know, our village president and his responsibilities are different than a mayor for a city. A mayor, from what I understand, is full-time and would have more oversight of all this. And I just wanted to bring that aspect up. We are not, we're a village, so we would not have a village, a mayor overseeing everything the way um that a city does.
Um, good, good question, Nyla. And I, I, you know, I can see, because there are a lot of cities with mayor systems that, that you might come to that conclusion. I will tell you that most cities in Wisconsin operate under the weak mayor form. So most of those cities that you saw uh compared to under the consultant's report have professional administrators like me. The larger cities, um, Madison, for example, is a mayor. Locally, uh, Stoughton has a full-time mayor. But not many, not many other do. Middleton is a city, but their mayor is a weak mayor with administrator. So largely the model for cities in Wisconsin, especially of our size, is typically weak mayor administrator form. But, but I'm not, I'm not, that it's a good question. I can see how, how that question comes about.
Okay, Aaron, questions, comments?
Sorry, um, gotta unmute. Um, I am really happy with the, I guess, the changes we've made. I feel more comfortable with us going from engineer tech to um professional engineers. I think as our, when we talked about this in January, like, you know, we're like just that reliance on how much will we need to and the little things we don't know about yet, like go outside for that. So, and I think that um doubled with, you know, obviously the vast experience that we're losing, but also like we're, you know, saving and then transforming in this with Bill and Tracy and I think this is gonna bring in, you know, some needed ways that we can, you know, use a transition to grow and do what we're doing even a little bit better, you know, and things we haven't gone yet, so. Um, my one question, I guess right now, uh, the communications intern, is that like an hour, like summer or we're thinking June through summer or is this like based off of their, you know, what the, I guess who we find and that, or is this like a renewable thing every year? We have the savings ones, but.
Um, we're anticipating um a full-time, one-year appointment of interns. There's a lot of um MPA or graduate programs in the area that have one-year internship students available, so we, we anticipate that sort of appointment.
I think especially our location, like I feel like we have a great advantage of having, you know, um, so the university and so many people that might be looking for something, so.
Okay, so I think that's everybody, um, with the exception of me. A couple of questions or a couple of comments. One, I think that if you're hearing any hesitancy from board members, it's really about the transition right now. Uh, I think that Kevin and, and uh has done a wonderful job within our community right now. The board has been working over the last several years to get a system in place to make sure that our roads and the repair workers get, is, is getting done effectively and efficiently. Same thing with our sidewalk program, which we talked about tonight. Um, so, so really, that's, that's to me, and we're, we're tweaking the system right now and um I think it's gonna be towards the better. And if I'm, and I'm not trying to discount what's been done in the past, it's really how do we move forward as our, our community is growing and we're looking at a system? I don't necessarily like to compare to Middleton, um, but, you know, cuz we're, we're not Middleton. We're, we're, we're just very different than Middleton as far as I'm concerned with, with how they've chosen to build their community. Um, as you know, that they have many more people commuting into their city than live there on a daily basis for work. They're very, very heavy into usage of TIF, very heavy into usage of TIF. We're not, we're not similar to, to Middleton in a lot of regards. So um, our system is gonna be different as a result of that. So I, I don't like that as a comparison. Uh, as far as the, the layers of management, I agree with Phil. Um, there's obviously gonna be some additional costs as we go through with this. And, and that's, you'd be putting your head in the sand if you didn't realize that or understand it. So um, to me, I'm looking at efficiency and what are we delivering to our customers, which is our community citizens and businesses? And if we're effective in doing that, so be it. Uh, this is gonna make us more effective, all for it. But that transition, and I think that's where I, I saw Dr. Random, I'm getting a little anxious is just that transition time with Kevin, and I think we'll address a lot of that when we get into closed session. At this point, it sounds like. So, Bill, go ahead.
In Kevin ginus in the closed session, so maybe I won't be as anxious.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. If that's Todd, do you have any, is there any reason that we wouldn't be able to, at least for a little bit of the closed session?
I think um, I think it'd be okay to the extent that we don't venture, venture into any aspects of an agreement that's under negotiation. But to that point, Bill, um, if that's the case, then I question whether the discussion you care to have with Kevin ought not be here in open session regardless.
Okay, that's fair. Um, Bill, do you have questions for Kevin?
I just I'm just trying to figure out if this is a structural change that actually makes sense or it just adds cost. I, I think our process hasn't been wrong so far. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure like what the added, I still don't feel the added value yet.
Kevin, are you there? So thank you for sharing before what you said. Maybe, maybe you could address just the transition and how you perceive the transition and, and how we go through this to make sure with your department that it gets, continues to be strong and, and operating efficiently, even with this change. If you're willing to do that.
Yeah, Chris, I don't know if I have, you know, the full understanding of what the transition's going to be. I mean, what I've offered is, you know, without getting into the details of the agreement, I've offered to, you know, stay on as, as a, you know, unpaid or a volunteer, whatever, whatever that term is to be a resource to that person that comes on to the village board during this transaction or transition. I mean, I've been here twenty-seven, twenty-eight years and, you know, I, I want what's best for the village. And, and so whatever I can do to help that next person or that community development person to understand the process that we put in. And it's great that we're comparing ourselves to the peers, but I always think that people tend to compare themselves to us because I think we're generally the leader of this size community. Where, if, if there's a size community of, of our nature, this is where they wanna be. We're, we're, I, I consider us the top. And so people tend to look at us and they keep asking me, hey, what's your process for tech staff? What's your process? You know, for involving, you know, you know, the, the public in these public construction projects? What's your process for, you know, all those, you know, the, the tech staff was, was certainly something I conceived, you know, together, you know, probably fifteen years ago. I wanna help. I think the system's in place. I think with the right person and, and I don't, I don't really necessarily be, need to be a part of that. They, you got administration that's very capable of bringing on some, some capable people. But they're probably gonna, if, if they're, if they're good, they're gonna have a lot of questions. And I just wanna make sure that I'm available to help them, at least through the first like three, four months of, you know, of their career. So they're not, you know, trying to like do things backwards.
Okay, um, Bill, Bill, you, you asked, so go ahead.
I, I mean, to me, this still feels like we're rushing into something. I, I wish that we had more than a volunteer transition, I guess.
Gary?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think all of this, I mean, as a village, we've grown and, you know, we're, we're focusing on, you know, the engineering position. But I think sometimes, you know, we've had way too much on Todd's plate. Your economic development, hey, you gotta run all these Zoom calls. You gotta be our village administrator. And because he's doing all that, he can't maybe help Caitlin out as much as she needs help with. And she's got a full bag. So it's almost this transition that's kinda tough to go through for us. But I think it, it may be a little tough on the engineering side when we start out. But all of a sudden, we get a planner and that takes some of the economic development stuff off of Todd's plate. And Todd can be, do his job better, which will allow Caitlin to do her job better. And I think it's just a transition that's, it's hard for anybody to go through. But I think as a village, three years from now, we'll look back and say, hey, this is the right thing to do because it, it got us to the next step. It made everybody more effective in their roles.
Well, let me, let me add, Gary, you, one word you used for the community development director was planner. I wanna, what I do wanna add, I wanna make sure that the village board doesn't feel like that's the title that I perceive for this position. And, and you've had really good questions about about um transition and, and the, and the engineering function. Um, good questions. I don't my hope is that the board doesn't, doesn't lose the perception of how entirely valuable the community development director could become as a component of the overall sort of, sort of forward force on our planning, on our comp plan, uh, uh, implementation. uh, uh, implementation, uh, and on our community engagement in general. Uh, again, I called the person, whoever we hire, I already use the word, a master, uh, fosterer, a master collaborator. And, and I just, I don't think we can, I don't want the board to underestimate the power of what that specialty could offer for organization. But, but good, good points, Bill, Gary, um, you know, and again, my ears remain wide open and I'm, um, I'm, and I'm appreciating those comments.
So with, with that said, um, Bill, do you have another question?
I guess, is this, well, maybe it's gotta stay enclosed, but I, I guess I'd kinda like to talk to Kevin and close then too. I still think that. I feel like the long run, I, I've had volunteer in my job, people say, oh, I'll be there. I'm gonna volunteer, I'll help you out. And it's like, that isn't how it always, nothing against Kevin, it just doesn't always work that way. I mean, and we have a big, this is a big job we're transitioning around, so.
Well, I mean, Bill, this, you're getting to things that interrelate with an agreement that we're negotiating with Kevin, and I would never advise the board to enter into negotiations in closed session with the person or the party, uh, that we're negotiating with. Um, I, um, I'm gonna, I mean, it's a decision of the village board to decide who you want to allow into closed session. I would advise that you would not include Kevin in closed session. And if you have other discussions about operations, that we should, that we should dive full into operational type questions right here and now.
So that said, Todd, um, we're gonna be discussing in closed session, obviously, it's pretty obvious what we're gonna be discussing here. And, um, doesn't it make sense for us to have that conversation before we would make any decisions with regards to this going forward?
Well, we're, I would expect that we'd come out of closed session before making a decision. Uh, and in fact.
For what we're discussing right now, we're not gonna probably be able to make a decision on this part before going into closed session. Is that fair to say, everyone?
I wouldn't expect you to make a decision on the org structure before going into closed session.
Okay.
That would be post-close session.
All right. Okay. So any other comments or questions right now for Kevin or Todd with regards, or Caitlin, sorry Caitlin? With that, uh, before we go and move on. Okay, seeing none, then, um, we're going to move on to number five and discuss and take action on review of employee performance and compensated relation to, and related to proposed reorganization. So the village board, let's see, I should make a motion first to go in. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Move, we go into closed session to discuss compensation.
Motion by Phil, second by Aaron. Roll call vote, please.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Niall Frye?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Sonner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Aaron Murray?
Yes.
Villages in close session.
I should read this, though. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851c for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So we've got a motion, a second to go into closed session. What do we need to do from here, Todd? Vote. Vote, sorry. Roll call vote Caitlin.
You already voted.
I did vote, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. Then just a couple of instructions, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I would just ask Kevin, even, you know, stay, stay, have your phone handy. I may have questions for you amidst your closed, the closed session, and I may be reaching out to you directly. Are you able to, uh, just have your phone, have your phone available. I may need to reach out to you directly with any questions. Okay, thanks. And then, um, I've, I've got a, a internally, a, a new approach to closed session that I'm gonna make sure I, I coordinate uh, perfectly. Um, but I am going to bring up a screen, uh, here in a moment that will indicate that the board's in closed session. So this, the only thing, uh, folks watching, attending will see here is a screen with no sound. Um, and then the village board should actually leave this meeting. You received a link earlier today, I think it might've came from Caitlin, uh, that gave you a link to enter into. Um, so I'm going to go to a different room, uh, enter that meeting from my phone, and we will see you there shortly. And then for the public here, uh, the, uh, when the board's out of closed session, we'll come back to open and this screen will turn then back to this full view of all the board members. So we will be back in a little bit.
Todd, we can't hear you if you're talking.
That was part of my double protection. It worked. Kevin, even if, are you still there? If not, I'm gonna text you to let you know we're com- Okay, you're there.
Well, I just happened to be walking by. Nice.
Good, alright.
Yeah, it's not close session. This is open session, I assume?
This is open session, yes. We may not have Bill with us, he lost a kid, so hopefully he'll join back in here.
That's not good to say about a doctor.
So, he's done, he's searching right now, so.
He's not in a third world country, he's here in mainland United States, so.
Yes, he is. Alright, well, he may not be joining us, so. Todd, we made a motion in closed session to go back into open session, so we're now back in open session at 8:46. From that, we had our discussion in regards to some retirements, and Caitlin, would you read the... What is the S. that just came on?
I brought in Steve Zock, in case he has any advice to offer the board in the process.
I think at this point in the meeting, we're back on item number four, and you're free to make discussion or action regarding the reorganization, and I do have updated motion language if someone wanted to make a motion or if we wanted to continue a discussion.
Gary, go ahead.
Could you read that new motion, Caitlin?
Yep, so it'd be move to approve the proposed engineering and public works reorganization and authorize village administration to implement the-
No, I think Gary means the, the motion that we had in closed session.
That's at the end of this.
Keep going.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Job description, village wage scales, and authorization to recruit the community development director, engineer, communications intern. Approve, authorize the village administration to implement alternative A if necessary, and approve retirement agreements as discussed in closed session for Kevin Even and James Madden.
One more. A second.
Okay, so a motion by Gary Hertzberg, second by Erin Moran. Is there any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, vote please, Caitlin.
Chris Elnar.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran. Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, so, also, I would just say, Kevin, this is like an unceremonious thing, but I can't wait to have your retirement party, and I look forward to golfing throughout the summer with you, so. That said, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Sorry, Chris, you've been added to the list.
For retirement, Kevin, I'm gonna buy you a mug that says you're on mute.
So, he doesn't want to be on these meetings ever again, so, that said, we are at the last item, which is-
Move to adjourn.
A move for adjourn for Gary, second by Nyla. Kevin, do you want to talk? Or are you just putting your hand up, say goodbye?
I'm always ready to buy, that's all I'm doing.
I always think he wants to talk, because we always put our hands up. Alright, that's better, they're doing that one, alright, roll call, Caitlin.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Chris Elnar.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, you're adjourned.
Everybody have a great night, great week. Talk to you later.
Say goodnight, Katie.